Township of Oxford Planning Commission Regular Meeting scheduled for Thursday, July 13th, 2017. Please rise and pay your respects to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call?
Noted.
Thank you. Item four, approval of the agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Second. Been moved by Mr. Berger, seconded by Mr. Curtis. Is there any discussion on the motion?
I was hoping we could add the subject of just discussing environmental issues.
Add that to...
To discuss.
Discussion item?
I don't think I have to do it. Commissioner Burden links them up.
Anybody got an issue putting that in unfinished business as item B?
New business.
Or I'm sorry. Seeing none, we're going to add that to new business item B. For amendment motion.
I'll make an amendment to the motion to add environmental issues discussion as new business part B.
I'll amend my second. It's been amended and re-supported. Any discussion? Seeing none, those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Passed. Approval of the minutes, item five. Item A. Planning Commission Regular Meeting, June 8th, 2017.
I'll make a motion to approve the regular planning commission meeting minutes for June 8th, 2017.
Support. Been moved by Mr. Curtis, supported by Mr. Hunwick. Is there any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. Approval of the minutes, item B, Planning Commission Regular Meeting for June 22nd, 2017.
So moved.
Support. Been moved by Mr. Curtis, supported by Mr. Hunwick. Any discussion on the motion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Passed. Item number six, public comments on the items not scheduled for public hearing or on this agenda. Anyone wishing to speak up? General call. Seeing none, move on to item number seven, Commissioner's comments. Mr. Curtis?
Well, I have a couple. Last night's township board meeting, the rezoning issue for the Market Street properties was denied to the developer, telling them to come back to the township. Township boards voted to send this developer back to the PC because two issues. Number one, PC was evidently not shown. They have a proposed development exhibited to the township. It was exhibited at the township board, not shown to us. That's not a matter of rezoning, but they felt it would be based on the size of their proposed redevelopment. So, secondly, what that would do is the number of units, the density, there was a question about access to the lake, and there was height and style of buildings that they had in question. And I know that, again, this is not a requirement of the rezoning, but it was the flavor of the township board to have this developer come back to the PC, and it was suggested either contract rezoning or consider a PUD to address those concerns that the township board had. The applicant was advised that he could do a preliminary application and a review with the engineer, the planner, some planning commissioners, and some people, Deanna in the office, and they were going to go back and talk about it, but they did not feel a blanket rezone to RM zoning was favorable at this time. Secondly, SEMCOG, the township board last night voted to become a member of SEMCOG again, and the biggest thing is it's a... There's a lot of opportunities for grants through SEMCOG, and there's a lot of data that SEMCOG collects. We are able to grab SEMCOG data, but as a member, you can drill down into their database on request for no additional charges. So, the board felt that it was good to join SEMCOG again, and Joe Ferrari will be the lead member, and Bill Dunn will be the alternative. Thirdly, the annual... The audit was done for the township financials. It's going to be available online, and a copy will be in the office. There were no discrepancies found in the audit. We looked pretty good. Everything except for the actuaries on the fireman's pension fund, but the new reporting of those actuaries are causing some misunderstanding, so we're going to wait here and find out. We had just put some more money into those things. What else did I want to talk about in the annuals? Let's just call that good for now.
Can I ask you a question about one of your comments?
Yeah, sure.
So, the flavor was mostly based on the proposal issued to the board, but what does the flavor of the board on moving to multi-residential?
The flavor of the board moving to multi-residential is...
Commercial?
Depends on what... They know there's no need for commercial in there.
That's what...
But to balance the needs of the community and balance the needs of the residents, they want to see like a PUD or contract rezoning, and that was...
Contracted and conditional.
A conditional contract, yeah, conditional rezoning.
Was there much public participation?
Yes.
Okay. I can't remember if it was at newspaper.
Yeah, the other thing was, the township may have missed some mailings of notifications to some of the neighboring residents for the PC public hearing. So, that was another reason that they sent it back. They wanted to make sure that all people within 300 feet of the rezoning were contacted, and there were two residents here that were not notified, and they said they lived within 300 feet. So, Curtis writes that he would review that and make sure the mailing went out next time correctly for the PC should the developer come back requesting rezoning.
I think that's one good point about having it for PC and then township board. When the press picks up on it, then people see it. I don't think they see it before PC.
Aye.
But I was surprised that we didn't have more public comment here on that issue.
So, we took all those factors into effect and told the developer that you need to relook at this and come with a better presentation to the planning commission.
Okay. They know that we can't suggest conditional zoning.
Right.
They know that we cannot look at a plan.
Right.
That's what I was...
So, we're back to where we started from.
Yeah, it's funny.
Does our chair need to maybe send an email that says that we're not allowed to even talk about use or plan?
What was discussed was, they came in and showed a plan to the township board.
They're not supposed to.
The developer is not supposed to, correct. They did, and that's what caused... A part of what caused the turning down of the rezoning.
But that goes to my point in the beginning, that once we rezon it, anything can go there.
Correct.
Their only mistake is showing their cards.
Anything could go in there, but we have the option to turn that down.
Only as a rezoning.
Once it's presented, we have a chance to turn it down.
You can't use...
Not as a rezon.
You cannot use their plan to rezon.
No.
No, that's what I'm getting at. If we rezon it, someone comes to us, whether it's that or the next guy, and says, here's my plan. We, at that point, have to go, let me say, yeah, I understand that it's zoned that way, but we don't like that. We don't like what you've got going in.
No, we know. If it meets the zoning category...
If it meets the zoning category, we have to approve it. We don't get it.
I think we'll be talking about all this at a future meeting.
Correct. Yes.
But there's no sense for us to review this.
That's my point. I think we need to be clear going in.
We don't review that.
Listen, they turned it down. They rejected it. That's the answer.
So, it will come back, and we'll look at it when it comes back.
If it's requested for zoning again, it's gone back.
Right, it's up to the developer to bring it back.
The petitioner has to...
It was rejected.
The petitioner has to resubmit and come back to the planning commission.
So, they're starting from zero again.
Nothing.
Nothing until we have something in progress.
You mean a plan?
No.
No.
A petitioner wants to do it.
It was rejected, so that we're at zero again.
We're at zero.
Right.
It didn't get rezoned. Maybe I wasn't clear. The township board rejected the rezoning last night.
I understand that, but you're saying that they want it kicked back down to us with the plan because we didn't have a plan.
No.
Part of the reason that the township board did that was, this guy came in and showed the plans to the township board.
Right, but that had no bearing to do with it.
Well, it can sure affect your thought process on what you want in there or what you don't want in there.
Well, we didn't have it, we didn't have to have it.
You didn't have to have it, right.
No, we're not supposed to have it.
Oh, we're not supposed to have it.
Yeah.
So, it's a dead issue then?
Correct.
It's just a...
When you said it was being kicked back to us, that was the confusion.
Yeah.
It's not being kicked back to us until the developer...
What I meant was, it's kicked back to the developer to come back to us.
Okay.
Now we're here.
Very good.
Mr. Old.
No comment.
No, I think there's been enough comments.
Remind you of that quick question, there's a lot of land clearing going on at 24 South of Oakland, like huge, what's going on there?
Yeah, that's where they're making mulch and things like that.
Yeah, there's like big commercial thing going in there. They've torn all the land apart and degraded, and there's piles of mulch and landscape material.
I've noticed that too.
It's quite extensive.
Where's that?
It's at 24 South of Oakland.
About the east side?
East side.
Almost looks like kind of a road going in.
There is a road going in.
Right.
There's land, the whole site is graded. The whole site has that land moved.
South of Oakland.
South of Oakland.
East of Oakland.
East side of the road, south of MSP in the lot, that's kind of south of the south MSP.
Yeah. Yeah, you might want to send the ordinance...
I thought maybe something...
Compliance.
I don't remember anything they inferred from there, but we have had something.
Make an inquiry complaint.
I just wonder what it's... There's a lot, and it looks like it's landscape, or mulch, or recycled material.
Mr. Spiz?
Nothing at this time.
Okay, moving on to item number eight, public hearings. To receive public comments on proposed special land use for bulk propane sales and dispensing station located at west side of North Pier Road, south of Minnetaka, and north of Oakdale within the township of Oxford, parcel number P-04-26-302-021 in the C2 general commercial zoning district. For bulk propane sales and dispensing stations with the permitted use to special land use in the C2 general commercial zoning district in which the subject property is located, per ordinance 67A, Article 3.5 L, C-2 general commercial. Applicants is Stones Hardware, Ace Hardware, 558 South of Pier Road, Oxford, Michigan, 48371.
I'll make a motion to open the public hearing at 7:14 to discuss item 8A as read by Commission Chairman Young.
Support. Been moved by Mr. Curtis, supported by Mr. Berger. Do we have discussion on the motion? Seeing none, those in favor of opening the public hearing?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Is anyone wishing the public to discuss the matter? Seeing none.
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing at 7:15.
Support. Been moved by Mr. Curtis, supported by Mr. Berger to close public hearing. Those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, moving on to item number nine, unfinished business. Ordinance Review Subcommittee Master List of Potential Amendments. You know, I took this to the board last month. They all agreed all of these items need to be looked at. They didn't give guidance as to their preferences to which ones go first. So, last time we met, I said we would discuss this and try to come up with some sort of order on how we want to approach all of these items that are left open, the ones in... Well, the ones at the top, starting with bulk propane, that's actually from there down, those are the ones I want to address, give a priority to, and then get that subcommittee back and up and running. Mr. Curtis?
One thing that I did capture from that township board meeting that's not on your list is the food truck ordinance.
Yes, I... That's a...
I've got a bunch of materials on that too from the state that they gave me on a model report.
So, if we could add the food truck ordinance somewhere in there.
Yeah, we'll add that as a line item.
Okay.
So, I'm not sure exactly how we want to do this. You know, I can give my opinions, but everybody's got an opinion, so...
Well, my... I can tell you...
I'm wondering for... Yes, Mr. Berger.
I can tell you right now, it's been a kind of a niche with me for a long time about these side entrance garages and the...
That's all done, isn't it?
Yes.
So, everything on the top's done, right?
Everything.
Which is completed.
Everything down to...
The first two pounds, they're counted.
So, one, two, three, four, five's done.
The one after bulk propane sales and...
Starting with state license residential, that's where we're going to start.
Okay.
Everything down from there needs to move forward.
That was just a definitions thing. We already have the wording, so really it's just a matter of looking at it.
If I can make a post, Mr. Chair?
Yes, Mr. Spiz.
I have a bottom of two separate categories. We'll enter low hour ones and then the higher hour ones.
Low hours.
The first three, the state license, legal family, and then a rezoning, the first three there, after bulk propane. And then, we have the one that's in final PC review, which is not conforming lots, right? That one, and then I would do the very bottom one, solar energy systems, which is eight hours. Max in that group would be eight hours. And then I put the other three in a separate group.
Yeah, we don't know where the food truck is going to land yet. I would imagine that's not going to take too long.
I guess they gave us a paper with a couple nominal things to look at.
So, probably one meeting, there are two meetings for you guys, and four hours from that.
Yeah.
For food trucks, we're saying that it's about two meetings for the subcommittee to talk about it, figure it out, read the language, blah, blah, blah. It's about four hours for the planner to write it up and get it presented.
Yeah, well, yeah, first meeting, we look at it, have the draft it, planner looks at it, second meeting, we go over it, write it forward.
So, Mr. Spiz is recommending the three that are continuously right after bulk propane sales start, those three in order, right?
Correct.
As being first.
Yep.
Okay, so those three obviously are first.
Then it looks like probably food trucks is number four.
This is number four.
I don't know. I mean, we start adding up all these hours. I mean, it's easy to do it that way.
Yeah.
The thing I think about is, what's important for us, and what do we see, and how much causes troubles? PUD costs a lot.
Yes.
Yes, Mr. Curtis?
And then nonconforming, but we're real close to having something on those.
What... Can I ask you?
I need to ask a question.
Right after Mr. Curtis' question.
Okay. These were all approved to be worked on.
Yes.
Okay. The low hanging fruit was always the mantra that we were going after.
Yep.
Mr. Spiz offered up, take the ones with the least number hours, the ones that you're already in progress on, and go from there. Now, is the building official have one that is burning in his pocket? That is the ordinance review subcommittee have something that can get done fast? Just consider those if you would.
I do have a question then, because just recently, I've had two documents, three actually now, for a solar system going in residential areas. And there's really not too much of anything that regulates what you do with a solar system. One resident put it right up in their yard, you know, on a foundation that comes up.
Yep.
Another one's going on top of a roof, which really doesn't bother me a whole bunch. There was a person that complained in the neighborhood about the one up the yard. We don't have anything that regulates anything in residential district. More solar is becoming more popular, believe it or not.
I guess...
Test it with LED.
And so, I... To me, I'd kind of like to see some guidance, maybe.
My proposal is put that into the first group.
Oh, move that one up.
Yeah.
Because I'm dealing with it right now, but I don't have anything that says anything.
Right.
So, when someone comes with it and with a plan, we just permit it. If it meets the setbacks requirements for the zoning that it's in, it's a done deal. So, I don't know if... You might want to look at that one. I would think that one would be... Okay, we're going to move that to first.
So, you've got nonconforming in group one, solar in group one.
Uh huh. Basically, eight hours or under.
Maybe that's enough just to get us started. Let's see how it goes from there.
You know. I don't see the street tree being that big of a deal for us right now.
Well, they're not to me, but maybe it's someone else, I don't know.
See the rezoning being pretty...
I already have the rezoning done here for that, because it could be done.
I'd like to see those in the group one, and then group two going into the state license thing.
You're going to say group two?
Yeah.
Oh, you're changing it?
Yeah, I am.
Okay.
And then get right into that PUD ordinance.
And that would be the next one after group two?
That is group two.
Oh, we had group two?
Yeah.
Could you rehash what just did?
Yeah, group one, I put in the nonconforming lots of record. And the rezoning.
Yeah.
Okay.
That's where you left it.
And then in group two, the state license, the PUD ordinance.
And where did you put?
And after that would be the town.
Where did you...
Food trucks, I guess, will go into number two.
I want to know where you put the street tree requirements.
Group three then.
Group three.
Yeah.
That's what I was asking.
Everything else would be group three.
It would be group three.
That would be my proposal?
I'm good with that. After discussion, I'm good with that.
Any other discussion?
So, group three's got one item?
No.
No, it's got whatever the other...
Whatever was left.
Mixed use, mixed use.
Mixed use.
Print sign.
Sign ordinance. Will it be on number three?
Okay, so that would be the order of precedent?
Okay, do you have a motion for that?
I don't think so. I think it's just directed...
Just direction to the ordinance review subcommittee.
So, there we have it.
Okay, good.
I believe that's done.
This is as of 7:13.
Yeah. So, you guys can begin meeting again.
Yes.
Thank you. And if... I mean, I know it would be in the minutes, but if one of you guys want to, you know, forward that on to Carlisle. Okay. Thank you. Going into item number 10, new business, proposed special land use for bulk propane sales and dispensing station. Is the applicant here?
Hello?
Just need a brief little synopsis of what you're trying to achieve, or your plan to achieve it.
My name is Marvin Stone. The address of the store is 558 South of Pier Road, Oxford, Michigan. I'm thankful to be in the community with a hardware store. We're doing quite well. The numbers are good, and thank you for helping to meet to this point. We initially purchased Tom's Hardware knowing that there was propane there, and we've gone through a series of errors and issues that occurred along the way with zoning and things that I was unaware of. So, there might be some confusion as to why we already have the propane in place, but it's because of the errors that occurred along the way, and my assumption that we would be able to use propane, be able to have a propane station. So, in any case, that's why it's there. We're interested in installing bulk propane as it was previously with Tom's, and I think there's a need in the community for it, and I would like to be able to sell it. So, we're prepared already with state approval, so we already had the state in and looked at it, but we have to meet all of the requirements prior, so we do everything in order, so... Any questions?
You received the packet review from the planner and the engineer?
Yes, there were four requests on that that will be met.
Okay. Mr. Curtis?
Well, I was just going to say, I think all the four items that are mentioned in the Carlisle Workman letter dated July 6th has been completed, providing documentation for LA RA regarding the parking and loading, all that's been addressed, and the information regarding new lighting you've proposed.
I haven't addressed that in any format. I thought that would be handled with regard to the building permit. Do you need that information now? I can answer some of the questions.
Final site plan. I just have to demonstrate that you'll be compliant with the zoning ordinance in terms of the lighting.
Yes. Oh, now, with regard to the lighting, we had no plans to put additional lighting at that location. There are lights on each side of the parking lot. We added an additional light at the back of the parking lot for light for the propane, and we had adequate lighting on the building, so I believe there's plenty of light there. We actually did have a complaint from the neighbor that the light was too bright, so we made sure we're turning that off at 11:00 PM. So, it's quite bright back there, and probably additional lighting would not be necessary unless some is required.
So, if I may, the ordinance doesn't necessarily require that you have it there as long as you're meeting the required lighting levels for your use, but it does require that you have those lights shielded and downed correct so that it's not spilling onto the property, so that's on neighboring properties?
Yes.
So, that's the kind of information that we would need to see along this building allocation.
Those requirements were already met in the original site plan approval, and there was a... I forgot what they call it. Now, it's a light plan.
Photometric plan?
Yeah, photometric plan was submitted and approved.
You're not adding any additional lighting for the propane?
No.
Thank you.
Hey, Eric, for the adsense class of propane, I got some stuff sent to me by DQ at EKA. Is that tank size regulated? Because they're saying that some of those tanks are regulated, and they have permissions that have to be met.
With the EKA, Laura would handle that, so that's the permit that we'd be looking for from the state to address the issues.
So, what prompts that? I'm just trying to get the tie-in at one point, because they may require different setbacks and clearances and things like that, so I don't want to get if they have a specific layout or clearances.
So, Laura is the state regulatory authority.
Right.
And so, we would defer to them to provide a permit, and if they're providing a permit, they would be aware of any additional requirements that may be needed.
Yeah, that's... 207 is what they told me.
That's right. That's why we look for more Laura to provide that permit.
At what point does that approve, I'm asking? If we approve this, and they don't approve it, it has to change. I guess what I'm saying is, what...
I could be helpful.
You've got the state permit ready to go.
The state's already given out, and he has already inspected it, and we are ready for it. All we have to do is comply with the electrical permit, which we couldn't receive because it wasn't zoned and we didn't... There's a whole complication of errors that caused this, but we had to get it zoned, then we had to get the special land use, then we had to get the electrical permit, and then we can get state approval, but we can't get it in time, those are done. So, the order is out of order.
And I wondered when the state approval came in, because if all of a sudden they And I wondered when the state approval came in, because if all of a sudden they had some different regulations, it's, it scraps what's happened here.
Right, you haven't seen, well, that has not been submitted to you yet because we haven't met the requirements of.
Preparing zone.
Oh, correct.
Okay.
Once we meet all those, I think it'll all happen very, it'll tick off fairly quickly now because it got out of order, but yes, it's a thousand gallon tank. And the state has already given us, uh, they're okay, but we have to send the materials to them to get their approval, which you'll then receive.
Mr. Chairman, what we're suggesting in our report is that you, if you do decide to move forward with this, that you can issue your approval on them receiving that, so if they don't receive.
State approval.
LARA.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Well, yeah, any, any federal and state approvals and not the specific.
I don't think that's better than regular.
That's my second one I wanna discuss afterward, however, in accordance with.
Just for reference, again, we've done this before and on my other locations and all it requires is state approval.
Yeah.
And then your approval.
Yeah, that's what it says here.
Any other commissioner comments?
I don't, I don't have any.
You put the tank and everything in assuming that you could do that based on what was there prior.
Yes, and I wasn't even aware of the zoning issue to be in, to be honest with you. We, we started with that and then once we had the zoning issue, then we had the special land use issue and, and that I, well, so yes. Now, it was on the original site plan as well, which was approved, so that got out of order somehow as well.
I believe, I'm not one to give you a hard time, because I think you've done a great job with that story.
Thank you.
And I, I love it. I patronize it a number of times and you've done a great job and it's a huge benefit to the community.
Thanks.
I guess my whole question is, is that the tank I put in before you got approval, but I'm trying to understand how that happened and how the inspectors allowed that to happen.
It was on the original site plan that we approved.
Yes.
Correct. Same with another entity.
Right.
Yes. Yeah. Our error is the planning commission. Any other comments? Seeing none, I move that the planning commission grant special land use approval to permit bulk, bulk propane sales and dispensing station at Stones Ace of Oxford, five five eight South Lefier Road, parcel number zero four dash two six dash three zero two dash zero two one, zone C two, general commercial. Applicant Stones Ace Hardware, based upon the following findings. Bulk propane sales and dispensing stations are permitted as a special land use within the C two district, subject to state license, licensing regulation and the proposed special land use meets the finding of fact for special land uses contained within section four point five of the zoning ordinance. Any unresolved related items to the township planner's letter review dated July sixth, two thousand seventeen. End of motion. Support?
Been moved by Mr. Curtis and supported by Mr. Spiz. Is there any discussion on the motion as presented?
What you said was it was contingent on the unresolved issues in the reports and the approval by the state?
Well, that's one of the conditions in the letter.
Yeah.
Is in that letter. Any other questions or comments on the motion? Okay, seeing none, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Seeing none, motion passes.
Thank you very much.
Good luck.
And I will continue to make it a beautiful place for the community.
Oh, it looks great.
So thanks very much.
Okay, moving on to item number B, uh, environment issue discussions. Callie, do you have any mind?
I'll screen people, Mr. Librie. Just based on what happened at, um, one of the previous meetings, I had called the state and they put me in touch with some people from the DEQ and, and EPA and some other acronym agencies, uh, but they sent me some really good information. They basically said that it's our job, it's the planning commission, you know, the job of the township to make sure that the environment, environmental issues are addressed on all properties. We seem to do a lot of focusing on commercial properties, uh, industrial properties that turn over, maybe that people are just have a poor mindset that something could've went on there, but you know, there's agricultural properties, there's other properties that happen in residential or other uses in residential areas that can contaminate. And when I look through a lot of the other township, um, processes, almost all of them use form to identify hazards on the property for any property coming from, you know, building permit or land improvement or any division and there's a really good form, uh, that they have. It's, uh, I'll try to give you guys. It wants you to DM there. It's a deciding form. And basically it's a double checklist. This is the township or the municipal side that the same form goes to the property owner, just says where it's property owner, where they have to identify any potential, potential issues on the property that they're aware of. And then by reviewing that form, you can determine if there's environmental issues within that property that need to be done further.
You talking for all properties?
Yeah, the city's law properties.
Were houses?
Yeah, especially, you know, houses, anybody. If you know that there's hazards on the property, you're supposed to disclose it by law. You're required. Problem is if we don't ask, it's not getting disclosed.
Well, let me ask this, Tom and Jim. Let me, let me help you out here.
Aren't there soil tests that are done?
Let me help you out here. I will submit this to Mr. Dunn, supervisor, who is in contact with the lawyers right now, based on your email, Callie, telling us our hands are tied. This is another thing that they need to review to ensure that it can or cannot be done. I think that if you had required this form of every home, every residential property or agricultural property, you're going beyond property rights. So let me just give this to supervisor Dunn and have him compile that with your email, Callie, who's being reviewed right now with Red Truck. And I'll, I'll, I'll take that to his attorney check for you.
First of all, this isn't going beyond property rights. This is standard verbiage. If you go to sell a house, things.
No, it's not.
Question.
No, it's not.
You haven't even looked at the form?
Yes, I have. I just read through the form.
This is.
The standard form that is required of all retail sales identifies lead-based paint. It identifies any operation that has been contained on the property that is lead-based paint. None of this stuff is on stored tanks, you know, this is.
First of all, state that.
Right, for personal property it isn't, but it should be.
No.
If there's some tanks on the prop.
When you buy and sell a house, this is not a requirement.
It is not a requirement of buying and selling.
I'm not talking about buying and selling a house. I'm talking about land improvements.
I am too.
Disturbing earth.
If I get a soil permit to disturb my soil, I am not gonna fill this out.
The soil permit requires it.
No, it does not.
The soil permit does. It says that we have a duty to ensure that we are not contaminating the water and we're not spreading contamination.
That's what a silt fence is for.
You think a silt fence takes the water and, and absorbs all the contaminants, so it's not.
No, but I think this, I think this needs to be reviewed by our lawyer.
Okay, if you Google.
I will, I'm not gonna do anything other than take this form to the supervisor and have.
I understand. You come just pre-think. What I did was I just did a search of environmental checklist.
I'm glad.
And multiple communities come up with their environmental checklist, which are almost identical to this.
What about VOCs going into the contamination of the soil from all these farm animals out there? No one requires any of that.
That's not true.
To get when a survey's done, VOCs come up on everybody's property.
That's not true. It is being done. It is being identified.
It is not. It is not.
Someone dies and sells a farm?
If we keep our heads, so if you're buying and selling a farm, you really ought to be having a phase one.
Ought to be, but not. It is not.
And if you're not, you're responsible for the pollution on that property when you buy it.
Buyer beware. Buyer beware.
Buyer might beware, but now if you're gonna dig that property up, now the township becomes involved and the neighborhood becomes involved.
Town for Jim, when, when do those soil tests come into effect? Whether the lot, whatever lot it is.
The soil testing that's done, does that, is that gonna look for these types of chemicals? It's more looking for, um, the density of the soils, the compactability of the soils? Is it clay? Is it, is it sand? Can you fill the foundation out? You're not getting into, you know, special chemicals and leads and things like that. So I'm just. Compaction of roadways and, and foundations.
Taking the personal out of it, I will be glad to take this to supervisor Dunn and show him what you've presented, what you're requesting and see what the flavor of the attorney says.
Right, I understand. What I'm saying is we look at what other municipalities do to identify hazards, because we don't wanna miss it. If somebody's had an environmental test done and is aware that there's a problem on the property, they need to disclose it. That's the law.
That's what they know.
That's exactly right. We're not forcing them to get it tested. This is about, are you aware of? Have you done these activities? That's all this form is doing. It's not forcing them to go test it.
And I've been asked. I don't see the form number on here. You have a copy of the form number? This is from?
Yeah, the DEQ sent it to me, so I'll just send you the email that came with it.
Is this, is this a?
It's a release property.
Right, it's one for on the DEQ side.
Is this a suggestion that just like the checklist?
That's what he said.
It's, it's not mandated.
No. The mandate is that we.
So you want us to mandate it?
Oh, no, the mandate is that we are responsible for identifying these properties.
Mr. Chair, by me. Callie?
Yes.
Did you spill this? All the information you have in DEQ out to all of us by trying to please, so we can get a chance to read it. Just going back and forth here, I don't think we're gonna solve anything.
Right. I, I forwarded my emails from DEQ or my contacts from DEQ and EPA to our chair.
When?
A couple days ago. It's the same letter he's talking about. It was a long letter aside and you were on it. It details a lot of this information.
Or personal email?
I'll get you some.
Okay, you can't send out your credentials?
No, it's a work. See, I went to mine and I, so I got it up on.
Yeah, I did that, yeah. So I, I have a chance to read it.
I was gonna say.
Over the hills with this form and all the other information that comes with this. Usually outline where to use it. This is a checklist, yes, but usually sometimes they say, they say, use it.
There's a whole lot of checklists.
Shelby's and you have to read the verbiage and how they.
Right, I'm telling you what they said that we should be doing and they sent some samples. They also sent a facility assessment survey and there's other tools.
I'd like to read them.
Right, they're saying.
Then I would suppose maybe at a future meeting, we put another agenda on and we have a more detailed discussion after we all have a chance to read it.
Yeah, let's do that and let's have Mr. Dunn take a look at it. I'll pass this on to him because I know that it's, it's a topic that needs to be remediated based on the letter Callie wrote and it deserves a response and I know he's garnering one right now. I will put this in his mailbox, talk to him tomorrow about it, let him know that this is out there and it's felt.
This isn't geared for one specific property. I'm pointing out that our ordinance specifically cites that these are requirements made for industrial properties, but it's kind of silent on residential type properties. And so I think that we're missing a section. It's really what I'm trying to point out. And we have to find a way to identify that. Back in oh four, we were supposed to identify all the sites in Oxford that could have potential contaminants and there's a lot of sites not identified.
I'm not seeing the address of it. Just as planning chair. Yeah, I'll look in my spam, but we're. Yeah.
I agree with that, but yeah.
So we're good then?
Went to that direction.
I just wanted to start the discussion.
Item eleven, communications and committee reports, violations report. Has everybody reviewed that violation report?
Yeah. Yes, so Mr. Chair, based on earlier, sorry, based on the earlier discussion about the Oxford Ace.
Yeah.
There is a note about the lighting and the force of the cell on page thirty-three. Please ask the chairman.
And Callie, you're gonna get a hold of Mr. Latoya's phone and ask him about what's going on in the south of Oxford?
Yeah. Send a email and I'll see if you can.
Okay, subcommittee reports, uh, being item one, acre block split committee.
Most recent.
Mr. Chair, we just had a meeting this evening in regards to a, a, a parcel split on Lake Drive where it was then going to be combined to both adjacent property owners on each side of it. So it was a, a land division combination, which was a very good proposal for both the property owners to then increase the size of their lots without changing anything in the neighborhood.
And that was approved? Good. Number two, EDSC.
We have, we have not held a meeting. We, we are lacking DDA director, the ability manager, vacations, weddings. We will probably not have a meeting until September.
Okay. Pereral inspection? And that's done? Ordinance review subcommittee, I think we went through that. You guys can be meeting soon. I take it?
Yep. Set a time after we do here.
Item C, reports from representatives, uh, from other boards of committee, safety path. We haven't had a meeting with the safety path, but Jim, do you wanna bring us up to speed on the maintenance, would you please?
Yeah, the maintenance project, uh, the contract work has been completed. Uh, we're doing some minor restoration items, but, uh, that project was completed. It came in under budget, so we have been directed by the, uh, by the committee to, to find a few additional repairs. Since we have a budget that we can spend and they got the money, let's, let's go spend it. We're gonna find a few other areas to, to, to spruce up. That work included, as you probably saw, a lot of ADA ramps, just really badly damaged, cracked areas, tree roots, that type of thing. So the jobs turned out very nice.
Thank you. Two, water and sewer committee. We're meeting on Tuesday to get us fresh back up on some things on our agenda. Currently, uh, the Great Lakes Water Authority increased our administrative costs and we were able to pay those and not raise the sewer rates. Administratively, we have a couple of proposals out there for, uh, splash pad and for, uh, water debt service repayments based on use, but other than that, I'll let Jim talk about our construction.
But you know, the construction on Lakeville Road continues. They've, uh, I think I've told you before that the portion from Hills of, or, yeah, Hills of Oxford down to the Lakeville Middle School is all operational at this time and, uh, they have gone across the school playground. They're working their way down Wildcat Drive right now. They did the bore the other day in the back of the school, about six hundred feet of directional boring back there. So bottom line, they are on target to complete this project and have, have the water to Lake Villa by mid-August right now.
Great.
There's also another project that's gonna be beginning shortly, Puritan Magnetics. This is a property just north of Hubbard Spring. Several years ago, we put in the water main for, uh, on Hubbard Spring property and Puritan Magnetics is now extending that water main for us by about three hundred feet.
They need suppression more.
Excuse me?
They need suppression more.
Yes, and they, they have their state approvals, um, they get their permits from the county, so we're just looking to have a pre-construction meeting. It's probably only be a couple days of work, but again, it's another three hundred feet of water main that will be added to our system that the township, you know, doesn't have to take for themselves.
The only one, one other thing administratively is Jim and I are working with MDOT to, uh, in twenty nineteen, the major tear up of M twenty-four to, uh, that lower portion of the township. Uh, we're going to run a water, we're proposing to run a water main there to complete a loop, uh, of our system in that area.
At the time it's torn up?
At the time, twenty-four's torn up. Whoa, stop that. All right, zoning board of appeals?
We did not have a meeting. I think we have one coming up, right, August?
No, nothing's coming.
Oh, okay.
They got a couple, not a meeting.
Village PC?
Uh, they did not have a meeting.
Okay. Planner, Carl, uh, Carlisle-Worthing? Mr. Chair?
Uh, the Banner Ridge project, the developer has just submitted the revised cost, or I shouldn't say revised cost, but a cost for the safety path over the creek there.
Yeah.
So that will be coming back to you for, I believe it comes to this, this committee or this commission, correct? For final approval of the township board. I forget what step they're at right now.
Township board.
Yeah.
Township board.
Township board, okay. Um, and they're, they're continuing to get, uh, their final documents in order for their master deeds and so forth, but hopefully that'll get all approved at next month's board meeting and, you know, the construction for that.
Okay. Well, with that, then I adjourn tonight's meeting. That's into the agenda items. Meeting adjourned, seven fifty.